It is, it is not.
I can't, yeah, I cannot begin now where all this coming.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
You couldn't be christened sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, May 28, 2024. The board supervisors did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of real estate and political litigation. No, potential litigation and received an educational presentation from the solicitor. I think I'm going to jump a little bit out of order because one of the recognitions that we wanted to do tonight, I think, may be running late. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Supervisor Martin.
Everybody, well, I have the privilege tonight to introduce you guys to the first grade Daisy Troop at Gwinnett Mercy Academy. They came to us requesting to put a free library in one of our parks as one of their service projects. And we gladly accepted and the staff was very excited to get it installed and it looks great in Oxford Park. And the township has put together a special certificate for the troop, which I am going to read. It's a certificate of appreciation. The Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors would like to recognize Gwinnett Mercy Academy Daisy Troop 7083 for their donation of a little free library at Oxford Park. The Girl Scout promise is to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, and considerate and caring. Girl Scouts also promise to use resources wisely and make the world a better place. This library fulfills this promise. Visitors of Oxford Park will now be able to find something new to read as well as share their favorite stories with others. But thank you, guys, I'm going to present you with the certificate, maybe we can take a little picture and then I think one of our troop members is gonna say some words. Everybody want to come and take a picture with the trip?
You want to sit here?
Yeah.
Let's take a picture.
Or do you want, do you want to hold it for her?
Hold this for you?
Okay.
Dear members of the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors, my name is Grace Law and I'm seven years old and in first grade at Gwinnett Mercy Academy Elementary. Tonight I am here with my Daisy Girl Scout troop 7083, which includes fourteen GMAT first graders and our troop leaders, Mrs. Strauss and Mrs. Torres and our school principal, Mrs. Knappke. This year our troop decided to use some of the money we earned selling Girl Scout cookies to purchase a little free library. We choose, we chose a green colored library, which is the main color for all Girl Scouts. We collected new and used books to fill the library for babies, kids, and even grownups. We worked together to make a schedule so every Girl Scout has one month. We are in charge of keeping the library neat, tidy, full. My friend Quinn and I are in charge of May. With the help of Mrs. Jeanine, Martin, and the Parks and Rec Committee, we are so excited to have our little free library installed in Oxford Park in Lower Gwinnett. We wanted to put the library in a Lower Gwinnett Park so anyone who visits can find something new to read and can have the chance to take home their own book. Did you know that reading is important because it teaches us new words? Reading is like exercise for your brain. Reading can take you on adventures and teach us new lessons like how to be a good friend. Reading is something that kids can do with their parents, friends, or siblings. Reading even helps me relax so I can fall asleep easier at night. Thank you for helping us give back to our community. We hope you'll stop by Oxford Park and take home a book from the library and add one of your own to share. Thank you from GMAT Girl Scout troop 7083. Amelia, Kiara, Eleanor, Emma, Evelyn, Grace, Genevieve, Leighton, Maddie, Olive, Olivia, Penny, Quinn, and Sienna.
I know that Supervisor Martin welcomed you and presented you, but I wanted to say thank you so much for coming. I too was a Girl Scout up until the age of eighteen. I was a cadet. So, so I appreciate what you're doing in your public service and we thank you so much for, for doing all of this for Lower Gwinnett. Thank you. Next up, we have another individual to honor. And this is to someone that we did honor previously this year, but again, her public service has come up. And this is in relation to Leola Hubbard's induction into the PA Voter Hall of Fame. Ms. Hubbard voted for the first time in 1963 at the age of twenty-one. She was attending college in Georgia at the time and sent her absentee ballot home so that she could be counted in Montgomery County, PA. Ms. Hubbard has not missed voting in a primary or a general election since then. This impressive voting record allowed Leola to be honored on April 4, 2024 by the Montgomery County Commissioners as one of the newest members of the Montgomery County Voters Hall of Fame. Leola said that she owes her dedication to all these people who fought and put so much effort into getting her the right to participate in this civic action. So today we would like to present a proclamation. It reads, the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors commends Leola Hubbard for her induction into the Montgomery County Voter Hall of Fame. Her dedication to voting in every election since 1963 is a testament to her outstanding civic commitment and example for all citizens to follow. I know that we were joined by a Brownie a little bit late. We just wanted to thank you for coming to join us tonight. And we did read and give a proclamation and I'm sure your friends will tell you about it. We wanted to congratulate you on all your public service and thank you so much for what you've done to Lower Gwinnett and Oxford Park. So, thank you.
Jamie, if they want to see this on YouTube, this will be, the meeting will be up there, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let's get another picture. Thank you. So next up, we wanted to talk and, and extend appreciation for our Community Response Unit. The Community Response Unit is two years into their success and we wanted to welcome a new addition to the CRU unit, Officer Sharkey. But in, in talking about the Community Response Unit, I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about how it came to be and how important this is to the board. And due to the, to the proven positive impacts of community policing initiatives, our Community Response Unit was established two years ago to foster closer relationships between our police force and the residents that we serve. And since its creation, the unit has focused on creating opportunities for community engagement, collaboration by organizing events, participating in neighborhood meetings, launching programs specifically designed to protect our seniors. And through regular interactions with homeowners associations, senior living facilities, schools, small businesses, and other organizations in our community, our officers have built trust and open lines of communication essential to addressing our municipality's unique needs and concerns. The board is steadfast in our commitment to prioritize prioritizing this new model of policing and in reflecting that and that is reflected in our recent investment in hiring new officers to allow for dedicated officers to support the community policing approach. By expanding our team, we aim to enhance our ability to respond to our community's needs, prevent crime through education and outreach, and create a safer, more connected community. Our proactive, community-engaged model of policing is not just a strategy. It's a core value that guides our interactions and our efforts to improve the quality of life for our residents. The decision to prioritize community policing is grounded in extensive research that demonstrates its effectiveness in creating positive outcomes. The studies have shown that community policing reduces crime rates, improves public trust in law enforcement, and fosters stronger, safer communities. Our continued investment in the police force is not merely about increasing the number of officers, but about adopting a more effective, community-centered approach to policing. By prioritizing this engagement and collaboration, we are committed to building a model of law enforcement that is responsive to our, our needs of our residents and promotes long-term community well-being. I'm aware that change is hard for everybody and so this policing model is not one that has been adopted in a lot of communities that are around us, but through the support of our chief and our previous boards, we were able to embark upon this and it is very important to us. So I want to thank our Community Response Unit. Again, Sergeant Rogie has, has gone on and retired. Sergeant Henry has stepped in as our sergeant heading up this unit with the addition of Officer Sharkey and detectives Cantrell and Ryan. I think what they're doing is engaging in our community way that we have not seen before. And there is some controversy, I think, in other research models around, is it truly effective? And I think that we can see from the dividend that it has reaped within our community that it is. Just through the touch a truck program or filling up our truck that is all wrapped with our Community Response Unit theme when they're going to the trunk or treat at the YMCA. Is important for our youth to engage and police in a positive way? I think that that engagement, again, through the research, kind of fosters a stronger, safer community. So I wanted to express our appreciation. I wanted to congratulate everyone on this successful two years and, and to say that this is just the beginning and that we appreciate all of your efforts. So I know that individuals may be called out individually from the Community Response Unit and receive accolades. It's a reflection of the entire Police Department in Lower Gwinnett. And we thank you and we appreciate you and I wanted to take this time to express that. So thank you to you all.
Next, I don't know if, if Jamie in town, you're quite as cute as our last guest. Want to have some pictures for our newsletter with our officers?
While we're taking our seats again, really Danielle, the recognition should really be reversed because if it wasn't for the board, we wouldn't be here. So yeah, I appreciate you recognizing the department and what we're doing, but really it is reversed. This started two, three years ago with your commitment, the whole board's commitment to change. And it was because of that that we're here tonight. So I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we have public comments, citizens' comments, concerns, or questions for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody online? No? Okay. Next up, we have a presentation on a two-lot subdivision for 1616 Schoolhouse Lane.
Good evening, Burtadak Kearney from Hamburg Rubin, here on behalf of Krista Pianzio, who is ill this evening. And Jack McCord is also present. The, he is the Total Custom Home, which is the equitable owner of 1616 Schoolhouse Lane, as you're bringing up the memorandum. Unfortunately, our engineer, Robert Snyder, wasn't able to attend, but I think between Jack and I will be able to answer your questions. As the plan comes up, this is a, an existing lot, the 1616 Schoolhouse Lane is an existing lot that's being subdivided into an additional lot. So you have a total of two lots. There's been a long history to this. The applicant received zoning relief back in 2018 for the minimum lot width requirement of 200 feet. It went up to the trial court and went up to the Commonwealth Court and currently it sits at the Supreme Court with a petition for allowance of appeal. We don't expect that the Supreme Court will take this case, so we decided to move forward with the subdivision and land development. One of the conditions, which is also brought forth in the memorandum that I wanted to bring forth, or I'm sorry, in the zoning hearing board decision that's also referenced in the memorandum, is that the applicant's required to do a deed restriction in a form satisfactory to the township's solicitor, which is to be recorded against the property to the benefit of Lower Gwinnett Township, prohibiting construction of any portion of the residence on Lot Two of the plan, any closer than fifty feet from the side property lines of Lot Two. And that, that was one of the three conditions. The other was the standard, proceed in accordance with the testimony exhibits presented. And there was also a stormwater one, but I did want to bring that one to your attention. So as it, as it wound through the court system, we did come to the Planning Commission in March and there were a series of conditions or recommendations of the Planning Commission for the proposed subdivision and land development. And those were that the applicant comply with the review letters from Gilmore, the fire marshal, except for the hookup public, except for the hookup of the public utilities, which shall be completed simultaneously for both lots prior to the issuance of the U and O for Lot Two. So Lot Two is the proposed lot that you're seeing up on the screen. Lot One is Mr. and Mrs. Dabrowski's own home is on that lot. I believe they are no longer living there, they're in assisted living at this time. So the Dabrowskis own the property, but they're not living at that house currently. So the suggestion was that when the use and occupancy for Lot Two is obtained and they start construction, that we have the utility guys out there one time to hook up both Lot One and Lot Two rather than doing it twice. The applicant, this is the third condition, is to offer dedication the right of way of Schoolhouse Lane if the township decides it wants it. We were to submit a landscaping plan with a tree count, providing a list of dead, dying, diseased, and healthy trees. And that was provided and Gilmore recently did a review letter dated May 23 in reference to that updated plan, which is the plan that you're seeing on the screen. And the fifth recommendation from the Planning Commission, it was a note should be added to the approval resolution that the future owner is subject to the traffic impact fee for one trip. There was another, I apologize, Mr. Stein also had a condition that the variances have to be upheld and that no building permit be issued until the variances are upheld and that the developer inform any potential buyer of the risks associated with buying the property before the issue is resolved. So that, that was also another condition or recommendation of the Planning Commission. And we recognize that, yes, we have to let any potential buyer know of that pending petition for allowance of appeal in the Supreme Court.
Just, just as clarification, is there a landscaping plan?
It was the plan that was up on the screen just recently.
That's also the landscaping, okay.
That's the landscaping plan?
Yeah, there's two, there was the regular subdivision plan was.
The first one.
The second one was the, where you see the X.
It's for the tree, the tree plan. Yes, I apologize, I know what you're saying. It's not really, we're not really showing the landscaping. One of the issues is, is we don't know, and Mr. Snyder, who's the, or the engineer for the applicant, indicated that he's kind of guesstimating where the, whoever eventually builds the home will put the driveway. It will come off Gypsy Road, Gypsy Lane because that is where the curb cut is. Did I, I didn't turn this off, did I? No, that's where the curb cut, the existing curb cut is. So he does believe what he is showing along there is probably what is going to be built by whoever purchases the home. But it is, the final plan will have to come before the township and the consultants to say, here's where the driveway will go. Here's the size of the home. We don't know what size home they would pick. He has shown the building envelope and showed an approximate two-story location of the home.
I, I, I guess I'm, maybe I'm, I think I might just be confused. So what is it that you want us to approve? Nothing, you're just giving us a.
We're just doing a presentation. Yeah.
We don't know who it is.
Oh.
It's a lot.
Okay.
They're going to come out and fix it, they're just haven't been here yet.
Yeah, this was just a discussion, this meeting, and then I believe it's June 25th, when, when it would be before you for a resolution.
So at some point, I think the Planning Commission, this is back to the landscaping question, asked that you have an evaluation of the property for dead trees, dying trees, living trees. Is that, was that the, the picture we had with all the Xs on it?
Yes, that was the, that plan and it shows, I believe it's four hundred and five inches of the trees that are being removed.
Yeah, four hundred and five.
Yeah. So yes, the plan that had just been shown on the screen, that is the plan that we provided as, as the Planning Commission recommended to Gilmore, who then did a review letter.
Who then did a review letter of that, of this plan.
Are those the trees that are being removed or are those the trees that are diseased? Do I see, I see, I see that there's a removal of four hundred and five caliber inches of trees. I see that. So if you, if you remove four hundred and five caliber inches of trees, you have to plant four hundred and five caliber inches of trees. So where is that?
It, where is the replacement?
Or, yes.
Yes, that's one of the waivers and we recognize, and I did talk to Mr. Snyder before I came here this evening, how, like.
Have you talked to Ms. Ponzio about the waivers? She's well, she's well person, how we feel about that.
No, I know, so she recognized, she had emailed me, she said she recognizes that we're going to have to discuss where else the plantings can go because that is a very wooded lot. We're not sure that we can get the amount of inches of caliber trees that we need to get on there on that lot because it's already so wooded. So yes, we recognize that either we're going to have to offer to place them elsewhere in the township or pay a fee in lieu. Yeah.
Can I just ask, so the recommendations made in the March 13th letter by Gilmore, have all of them been addressed?
Yeah, other than the waivers, most of them have been, I think all of them have been addressed, other than we had asked for a series of waivers, which is a March 20th letter that we had provided.
Dormwood, all of that, all of this.
Yes, actually, I specifically asked about the stormwater, that's, that's will comply.
Okay.
So is the, is the May 23rd the only waivers that you're seeking, these four waivers?
Well, we have a March 20th letter of requested waivers. Do you all have that?
I only have March 13th and then May 20.
And we just have the Gilmore lovers.
Yeah, we only have May 23rd and then.
I do have.
Does the, does the May 23rd letter respond to the March 20th letter?
I believe the May 23rd letter is really just the landscaping of trees.
It's my, my understanding that there wasn't a full resubmission of the plans. They submitted that lance, or they submitted that tree clearing plan to supplement and as, as requested by the Planning Commission. I think when she says that the items in our letter were addressed, that she means they are will comply. Is that right, Bernard?
Everything is a will comply except for what's in the March 20th letter?
Yes.
The, the book print that is being shown of a potential house on the second lot. How, what roughly, how big will that make the house that will be there?
You know, I didn't scale that off. I apologize, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be able to answer that. I forgot to ask Mr. Snyder that. Do you know what that was, Jack? The size of the home that Bob, or that Bob's. Forty-five hundred square feet for the home?
On, on the single, on a single level? Okay.
There are, there are shade trees on both. I guess there are shit, you're saying there's shade trees along, was it Gypsy Hill already?
Yeah. There are a lot of trees out there, yes. So we, yeah, so what he was saying was, we were asking for the waiver. We could probably get the street, the shade trees or street trees on there. We don't know. We didn't know like yet, we, somebody might have to come out and make sure they're going to survive because of the, where they're located in relation to the existing trees.
And when you come back in June, you'll have a update on the trees on, on the proposal for the four hundred and five caliber inches that are going to have to be removed?
That are going to have to be.
No, is that not, you know, am I not understanding that?
Well, no, Neil's looking at me because we need to have an answer and a decision on that before the 25th because he needs to be able to prepare a resolution. So part of what we need to discuss this evening, I guess, is if you are in, if you're okay in theory with, with a waiver, provided that they replace them onsite, somewhere offsite, or a fee in lieu, combination of those three things. And I think we can work with the applicant to come up with.
Okay, that, that was clear.
Okay.
Are we in agreement on the four hundred and five caliber inches?
I believe, yeah, I think.
So isn't that probably, or is that accurate?
All right, so there's four hundred and five inches within that limited disturbance that they show there. I would recommend that the. Um, I would recommend that the record plan and record set show that exact limit of disturbance. Because that's what the waiver is gonna be depicted off of. And that you have to stick to that when you come in for a building permit. Because the idea of the tree waiver, this is the only chance the township has to get the bite at this apple. Once you got the subdivision approval, that requirement is in salvo and it's not in the grading ordinance. Um, so I would suggest that your engineer. I'm sure he has prepared a grading plan that shows the footprint of the house that you'd like to build. And the stormwater management and that'll, it will all fit within that limit of clearing. I would suggest putting that into this subdivision plan so that everyone is on the same page. Of what can be cleared on that lot in the future. Is that okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, the challenge that we have is that we don't know what the house design is going to be.
Yeah.
Um, so we're showing the building envelope and the area of disturbance and we'll salvage every tree we can within that. Area disturbance, but we won't know until the plans are designed, what the stormwater implications are. But that's why we said we, we would comply with all the township requirements for that. So as far as the trees are concerned, if we can't plant them on this site, we would plant them somewhere else in the township or. Pay it, you know, a fee in lieu, uh, planting them all on the site because it's heavily wooded already.
Right, and that's, we, we sort of have to, if we, we have to approve this stuff before you take down a single tree.
Right. And we're not doing anything until we get.
I, I, I understand that. So what you're. I, I see the, I see the. Um, it's the Montgomery Planning Commission, the color picture. So. I'm not an arborist or a bit, okay? I don't even play one on TV. But it seems like. You're gonna, that, it's the bottom part, right, we're talking about, right down there. You're gonna, I guess the development's gonna come in off the Gypsy Hill Road?
Yes, that's.
And so. Four hundred and five caliber inches seems like a small estimate. Of what's gonna have to be cleared from that property when you're coming in off the Gypsy Hill Road. And I, I, listen, I, I just don't know the answer, but I mean, it's. Where did four hundred and five caliber inches come from?
Go through the whole lot, do the way out, the building envelope, lay out the driveway and all those Xs that you see on the plan. Are trees that he feels will have to come down to accommodate the building site. So four hundred and five was an accurate measurement based.
Well, it could be more, it could be less.
Well, it could go either way, but what he's, what he's saying, based on what they saw, that's what they felt.
I, I just.
Whereas we understand that it's less we do, we won't know that until we actually design a home and put it on.
So let's say it's more. What does that mean for us?
And that sort of uh, comes back to, as we had with the sewer, we were saying at the time of uh, we come out for the building permit. We could certainly put something on the plan that says if it, let's pick the four hundred and five, that's four hundred and five. If it's less. Then perhaps we owe less in the fee, or if it's more, we owe more in a fee. But I think, right, the exact number's not gonna be known until somebody goes out there and starts removing them at the time the building permit is uh, obtained.
Right.
Yeah.
And I guess I, I'm, that, that's just a. It's obvious, right? It's just a heavily wooded lot.
Yeah.
And you're gonna take down all those trees and like a one-off somewhere in the township isn't really. It's not gonna, it's not really gonna replace what's being taken out. And I just wanna, I don't want there to be, if, if you take down less. We shouldn't get more for you taking down less. If you take down more, you should. I mean, it should just be whatever's fair. And we just need to make sure there's a mechanism for that, right? Or, or. I don't know what the mechanism would be. Okay, right, because you've never done this before. You come in with your plan, we're approving a plan. That's, that's not what you're asking us to do.
Generally, the fee in lieu, it is paid at the time of the plan being recorded. At, at this point, the discussion is to have that.
In advance.
Be, be paid later. But the calculation has to happen now. So I, I don't.
It's, it's like the preliminary calculation and it's finalized when they're, when they go out and actually build.
So why are we putting the cart in front of the horse?
Yeah, the board has to approve it, no? You don't have the number after the improvement.
Yeah.
I can afford to prove it.
Well, I guess what I, what I'm saying is in the resolution, it would say what is proposed is four hundred and five. You'll pay the uh. The fee in lieu or put the trees elsewhere. If it is determined at the time of the building permit. That it's something different, something less, I know it's gonna be hard to get money back from the township. But if it's something more, they have to pay more or plant more trees elsewhere.
So what's the amount of the fee in lieu?
I'm sorry?
What's the amount of the fee in lieu?
Well, I think that's something, yeah, we have to discuss before June twenty-fifth.
Yeah, we have to discuss it tonight.
Yeah.
Order for me to do a resolution.
And I don't know what the stand, I wasn't able to get ahold of Chris, and I'm not sure what you are currently using for your fee in lieu.
I guess I'm just wondering why we need to do this in this order.
In, it, because we don't have a. It's sort of the chicken and the egg. In order to get the buyer, we have to have the, the. The land development and subdivision recorded. Because we can't sell a lot that doesn't exist. No, he's selling, yeah. It's.
So you have a, I get it, yeah. No, I don't like this.
I mean, I, I think that you. Base the fee and you base the calculation in the tree removal off of the maximum limit of disturbance that. You feel is reasonable, and then that is what is tied to the approval. And any, there can be language on the record plan or in the resolution that any. Um, clearing outside of that requires a, an, an amended final plan and a revised waiver from the board supervisors.
And that happened.
It's like finding a, you know, the, the board doesn't know what it's approving at this point. What's the amount?
No, I. No, we're gonna count, we're gonna, we're gonna come to an agreement on that based on their limit of disturbance. And then if they, whatever, when he sells the lot, the buyer wants to build a house outside of that limited disturbance, then. They have to come back to the board supervisors.
Yeah, we could certainly do it that way, that it'd have to come in for amended final plan. So we approve it.
In this resolution, what is the amount of the fee in lieu?
Oh, well, I'm waiting for them to make an offer. Neil, I'm not gonna.
Well, what, what, what is the, what is the? Not necessarily asking you, I, I would suspect you have, what, what is the maximum area of disturbance? I know they said four hundred and five caliber inches. And I know that comes from this, but when I look at that.
It looks like it all can be cleared.
I mean, and that's what worries me, and I'm not suggesting, you're not gonna build there, and so I'm not, I know it's not gonna be you, but. We've seen this movie before, where we're told it's not gonna be a lot of trees and it's all the trees. And, and I, and again, I know that's not you, it's whoever's gonna wind up buying it and building. I get that part of it, but. We have to sort of figure that out now because the fee is gonna be calculated now.
Right, so that's why the.
And I just don't, like, four hundred and five, what, what is four hundred and five caliber inches? Is that what it is, a hundred and thirty-five three-inch trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, better.
Yeah, and at three hundred and fifty or actually at four hundred dollars a tree.
You're talking about three-inch tree.
It's fifty-four thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that's just like.
It just, it just seems that there is the potential for there to be total clearing. And I know that that's not, I know that's not the, what you were gonna do, or, but. There's no recourse after we approve it.
Well, I.
But if you.
Sounds like Jim saying we would have recourse though, because they.
No, I was gonna tell you that you actually don't have any recourse. Once the subdivision happens and the house is built and the CO is issued. The owner could clear all the trees after that. So that's what I just wanted.
This is the only time, though.
Yeah, sure.
Right, and I think you could put a mechanism with, in the resolution and a note on the plan that says. Yes, uh, Total Custom Homes is saying this, if the, whoever buys the home does something different, does something more. Then they, at the time of the building permit, or before the use and occupancy can be issued, that has to be squared up.
And that's, that's up to.
It's, it often happens with traffic impact fees, you actually do the post occupancies to determine.
The statute that governs that.
This is difficult because in my neighborhood, which is very close to this neighborhood. Um, every new house that's been built in the last fifteen years, the builders have cleared the lots. So I think um, Mike is, his concern is real that um, you know, we have no. Uh, mechanism to reach back and um. Reclaim this uh, level of uh, tree clearance. At, at the same time, you have the right to sell your, to, you know. To capitalize on your property. So we shouldn't make it so onerous that you can't. You know, conduct your deal uh, and get benefit from your property. But um, I think this puts us, this puts the boards in a little bit of a difficult situation tonight, I think. Trying to decide how to move forward.
We, I mean, we, when we did the survey, we had an arborist committee, we know that they've designated four hundred and five. Inches of trees have to be removed for the building site. So you have a base plan showing what we believe is an accurate count. If it changes when the built, when they come in for the building permit. Um, they have to pay more or less, whatever that may be, but we, we've already established a baseline that we can work to. That's why we did the survey.
Are, are we able to do that at the building permit phase?
That, that's a problem is that we may not be able to do that.
The building permit, if you follow the requirements for a building permit, you're entitled to one. Um, you're, what you're asking for is a conditional building permit. And I'm not sure we can issue a conditional building permit.
How many total trees are in this lot, the new, the subdivision?
Yeah, so there's ninety-six live and thirty-four dead or dying.
Well, and the total lot though is, do you have that number? Um.
On the to, uh. I thi- yeah, he did it on the total lot. If you see the. Um, if you see how it says H D F, he gives you the, uh, that's the label. And that label tells you if it's H, it's a twenty-inch caliber tree. So yeah, he did the whole lot. He did outside the building envelope. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what's the total number?
But, but Neil, what I was saying was, it could be a condition of approval of the, in the resolution, you would still have to abide by it.
You're saying we wouldn't know the maximum number of trees to be removed until the building permit's issued. Or at least until it's applied for.
Well, right now, we know it's four hundred and five. But if, the concern is that you think we're gonna take down more, not us, but whoever builds takes down more. You could certainly put a condition in the resolution that says if you take down more, you either have to come back for an amended final plan. Or you have to, before we'll issue you the uh, final use and op, before we let you use the, the use and.
We would turn that at the building permit stage.
Well, that's what I was wondering, you might have to do it after, prior to build, use.
We would know during the building permit review process. If more trees were proposed to come down than is, are shown on that plan, than the four hundred and five. Yes, and.
Is, is it possible that we make? Our, our concern again is that we're losing some tree cover and we're trying to reverse that and, you know, or mitigate that in lower Gwinnett. Is it possible instead of putting the um, the, the building footprint that was first proposed? Uh, that your arborists use to know how many trees are, need to be taken down? Is it possible to make that footprint bigger to air on the side of um. Taking down, um, you know, understanding how many trees maximum might be needed to be removed?
The, the building envelope that shows you actually step back line.
Uh huh.
So we.
So it can't be any bigger? Okay, so. Right. Can we see the Xs up there, Jim?
I mean, I, I just, I, I share, I, I, I mean. As these observations about how developers develop. Yeah, are consistent with my experience. So if you're gonna build, if someone's gonna build a forty-five hundred square foot home, that's a big home. And. They're not gonna want necessarily a wooded lot, they're gonna want a landscaped lot. And it's just easier to take everything down.
But I think as your engineer just said, there's nothing precluding, once they own the home, a year later, they could take whatever they want down.
That's why we have to, that's why we have to deal with it now.
Yeah.
Uh huh, right. That, so you see, we have to deal with it now. And. In a, you can understand why in an absolute abundance of caution, we would have to assume every tree goes. I mean, we'd have to, we, we would have to assume that because after this happens, they could do whatever they want.
But I, I, I don't think you're reviewing every land, every subdivision of land development that comes through here as it's, the place is clear cut.
We have the landscape plan though. We have their building plans. We know what they're gonna build. We don't have that here.
Yeah, because we don't have the.
Right, so you're, you're asking us.
It's the chicken and the egg, right? I can't get one till I get a lot.
Right, which is not how the process works. Ninety-nine out of a hundred times. You're just sort of asking us to go off the process, which is. We're government, we're government, so you're throwing us way off.
Right, I know, but you, you understand what I'm saying. It's very hard to sell a lot that does not exist.
I, I get that part of it.
Yeah.
But you, but, and, and under normal circumstances, the person that's asking for this is usually developer.
The person who's actually gonna do it, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're, everything is off in this situation, that's all. And, and you're sort of asking us to. We don't have a meeting in June before you're, we don't have one before June twenty-sixth. So you're asking us to, to make a decision on something that's way off the beaten path. Now, for a month from now, so you can come back in and get your approval. And it's just, I think that's what we're struggling with here.
Well, and, and this is just a suggestion, I have not brought it up to um, the applicant. You could also do a declaration that says. I, if your concern is that, that the land development plan itself is not enough, you could certainly, we could record something against the property.
That's fine, I'm just interested in what the number is.
It's four hundred and five, that's.
I know that's the.
No, I think, I think he's.
Dollar.
He's asking the dollar amount.
Mm-hmm. And I, and I guess, yeah, and, and my, I wasn't sure what numbers you were using at this time. It's been a while since.
Usually these discussions take place before the meeting, not after the meeting.
Uh, yeah, no, understood. I, I got thrown into this today.
I know, I know. I can't eat your shoes.
And, hold on a second. Yeah.
It's not like. We usually negotiate.
Right, right.
So Jim, there, I believe they're asking, what is the dollar amount per inch caliper? That the township requires?
We, many of the projects that have happened recently, there's been a lot more to the calculation and a lot more to the negotiation than just. A per tree amount. Like if you remember, Gwinnett Mercy University had the LED upgrades. And the potential for solar panels and all, all these environmental.
Right.
Things. Um, I mean, I can tell you that to. For the township to procure a shade tree and have it planted is probably about five hundred dollars. Um, but that's, you know, including having it guaranteed for eighteen months and going through public bidding and, and, and all that. So I would think. It's probably a starting point, but.
And so what dollar number does that bring us to if that's for a three-inch caliper tree?
Sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And the total number of trees on the entire lot, if it was cleared? We know what that total number of trees would be?
I think Jimmy said there were, we don't know the caliper inch. We know the number of trees, but we wouldn't know the caliper.
We don't know the caliper inches of it, okay.
Those are all size.
Yeah.
Me and my neighborhood was all wooded, they cleared the whole thing out. I know, I hear you, I'm just.
We have Jewish or film or some with that line of where they can cut trees and they don't do that. Why isn't there any, there's, there's got to be a way to.
I think we're, I think we're understanding there is a way to do that.
Okay.
Now we're just trying to come up with a number.
Right.
We don't have to authorize Neil to do anything at this moment today, is that accurate?
Exactly.
So we can take back these questions and hopefully get more resolution and numbers and have a further conversation. The only concern would be our next meeting is the end of June. That's when you're coming back for approval. We won't have an opportunity to consider this.
And who, who do you normally, is, is, do you talk to the engineer and the solicitor in reference to the, the waivers for the trees? To come up with the number?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if Kristen had reached, reached out before today or not.
I've not heard.
Okay. Okay.
Not to make matters worse, but I see there's also a waiver requested for sidewalks and trails.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so the, we do have a, we have an initiative as, as it relates to our comprehensive plan to, to kind of include sidewalks and trails moving forward. And I see that you're asking for a waiver of that. Is that waiver being asked because of the removal of trees?
Uh, the waiver's being asked because if, if you look at, you had that plan back up, there are no sidewalks out there today. It's kind of a unique neighborhood. And as the planning commission indicated in their minutes, if, uh, the trail wouldn't be, there's obviously no trail or sidewalks out there today. And they didn't think either, for lack of a better word, would be well received by the neighborhood. It's just, it's an established kind of neighborhood without those sidewalks or trails there today.
It's just the very end of Gypsy Hill, huh?
Yeah, but it goes into, it's like a, it goes into a little cul-de-sac.
Right, I'm saying that's the end of Gypsy Hill.
Yeah.
So.
There's no sidewalks.
Yeah, I've seen that from the aerials.
There is a trail back there, but it's not where this lot is. It's like across the street. And so then the other waivers are related to with the minimum, okay, no, I'm sorry, the, the cart rate with, cartway with.
On schoolhouse, yep.
Okay. And so as it relates to the shade trees, are those not, you, you're referencing the numerous trees that already exist along the front edge? Are they not going to be removed? Because from what I saw, I thought some of those were Xed out.
Just enough to clear from the drive.
Okay. Are any additional questions from the board? Anybody else have any additional questions? Any questions from the public? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have consideration from the board on pending zoning hearing board applications. There is a zoning board here, hearing application before us. Let me bring up the address. Is it eight? Eight twenty-one? Eight twenty-one North Bethlehem Pike, it's in the D Business District. And it's a retail strip. Two of the businesses are using garages for storage and the third appears to use the garage. For storage, this is not prohibited by our current ordinance. Consideration from the board if we would like to send our solicitor to defend our ordinance. I don't know if anyone would like to discuss. This is eight twenty-one? Eight twenty-one Bethlehem Pike. Anyone?
Do we need a motion? I will make a motion to send Neil.
To defend our ordinance.
To defend our ordinance against the uses currently outlined on that property.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next up is a review of our capital projects. I think this is Mimi.
Um, so Jamie's going to pull up a PowerPoint just to try to make it a little bit simpler to walk through.
Oh, there was, sorry.
Do we need to say the other one?
What?
There's another Z H B application that the board was.
I'm sorry.
Opposition to.
Um, so the application as it relates to seven twenty-seven Norstown Road. Um, I believe that this application is going to be in front of the zoning hearing board as well. And consideration for us to send our solicitor to, um, oppose any.
Request for interpretation.
Request for interpretation.
And support the area. Yes.
You make a motion? Is that what you're doing?
We're talking about for ship, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that, yes, I moved to, to authorize the sending of the solicitor to the zoning hearing board to oppose the request by ship for the interpretation as an accessory use and to support the request for bearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, sir. Mimi, it's now back to you.
Thank you.
Uh, so I included kind of a lengthy memo and a rather complicated spreadsheet in your packet. Uh, that's something that the staff, especially Melinda and I have been working on as far as the spreadsheet itself. The contents of it has been definitely a group effort with a lot of cost estimates and updating from our township engineer and our traffic engineer and our assistant manager and director of public works. Lots of input that way, trying to pull together the total costs for what's a, a pretty extensive capital project plan. So I, I wanted to, to kind of list out here hardware this is all coming from. There's been a lot of planning underway in Lower Gwinnett, which is a very good thing. I want to encourage you to keep planning. The, the trick is that you got to implement those plans, or at least that's the ideal. And for these plans that are leading to, um, especially the ones that lead to capital projects, you got to figure out how to pay for them. So, um, go to the next one, that was more just a. The other thing is, even if you weren't planning, we have ongoing capital projects and purchases that we need to happen. There's just our, our regular needs of maintaining our infrastructure, our roads and bridges. Every year you approve a paving program. We have funding in this plan to supplement the annual amount we get from the state, from their highway aid or, or the gas tax, the municipal share of that, because we need, we really should be increasing the amount that we're doing. When there was a ton of development happening in Lower Gwinnett, you had a lot of new roads and could get away with only paving what liquid fuels or highway aid would pay for. You're just not in that stage of development now. It's a more mature community, we've got older roads, need to maintain them, bridges and traffic signals the same way. Eventually they age out, need to be addressed. You own buildings, we have vehicles that need to be replaced. You have two fire companies that have asked you for additional capital funding. And there's truly just, there's a placeholder in the plan. We haven't even started those discussions other than to tell both fire companies that we would have those discussions. So all of that together adds up to a lot of money and a lot of projects. So in total, for everything that we have, that's either recommended in a plan or that we do on an annual basis for the rest of this decade, tallies to twenty-nine million dollars. And that is not including any plans for a new public works facility. That's a lot. I, this was hard enough to do anyway, but, but just so that it could all fit on a screen, we, we pushed it all, like what would happen if we tried to implement it between now and twenty-thirty? So it's, you know, it, you couldn't do it, I am not recommending this is.
We don't have this. Our packet?
We have this summary sheet or?
No, this is in PowerPoint.
This actually would be nice to have a hard copy.
Sure, I can provide that. I just put that together today as I did the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
So, um, yep, can provide that. It's, that's, it's just summarizing in one place, everything that's in the spreadsheet. So it's just walking through and then sorting it so you can kind of see right now, what are the, the big, bigger tickets from the various plans that you've done.
This includes or does not include?
It does not include public works.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine million dollars in capital projects, not including the public works.
Correct.
And that's through twenty-thirty?
I picked twenty-thirty for part of the discussion today. There's, you don't have to implement all of that. I absolutely do not recommend you try. But this is, as you keep doing plans, this includes all of the Parkmaster plans. This includes, you know, projects, well, finishing up the Spring House intersection. That's really the, the last big one from our, our two oh nine plan. This, there are like, the, the transportation capital plan that we have as part of the, that the two oh nine fee pays for includes a widening of Sumney Town Pike. I did not include things like that on here that could not possibly be paid for by twenty-thirty. Because you wouldn't show the grants, it would just skew it to show like, you know, a totally unrealistic.
This is actually quite useful. I was really having trouble trying to digest the whole spreadsheet.
And Mimi, does this include like when you're guest estimating grants that we can obtain and the, because I know on the park, like when Jim presented to the parks, or there were certain funding opportunities that were included.
This is just what it would cost.
What it would cost, okay.
Right now, the funding's.
Not how it would be paid for. So this kind of leads me to the next question. If you take out the parks piece of it, because I know we've put a lot into the parks. Um, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm just, I want to, historically, and I know the parks are different because we've really sort of bulked that up in the last year. Would, would our revenues pay for these? I mean, because these seem like normal sort of projects that we're dealing with, like roads, sewer, trees. I mean, we deal with that every year, right?
For a lot of that, yes. If, if you, if you both, if you, mostly if you just add a good five years or more to this, this isn't a five-year plan, it's at least a ten-year plan. So if you just extend it, I think you can pay for it.
Right, but I, I want to, we'll get to that. I just, my, my, my sort of other question is, if you, again, take the parks out, right? The other stuff is the stuff we do on an annual basis anyway, right?
And then some. It is not only, you've done all of.
We do this and more.
This, so this includes the things you'd have to do anyway.
Yeah.
Because you, you have to pave every year. This, so you have bridge inspections every couple of years. This includes every bridge that has recommended be repaired. None of them were in the do it tomorrow. Like the one that needed that is getting done, the old Bethlehem Pike, right? If there was anything like that, we would have been coming to you. But these are bridges you need to plan to replace. They're, they're becoming obsolescent. They are all in here. So it's where, so like, those are things over the next ten, maybe even a little bit longer, you would, we need to plan to replace just for this exercise. And you can see everything that's on the table, it's all on here. That's why I just really want to emphasize, it's not a realistic timeline. But, but you have, like you, you did the Houston Creek flood study, that has recommended projects. There's one very large expensive project in that, the basin project, right? Almost two million dollars. That is in here. You, um, Jim is working on the stormwater strategic plan. In here is the cost for the Penland flood study and a placeholder of five hundred thousand dollars for implementation. That's probably low, but.
Five hundred for what?
Implementation of that, but then, but nothing else. There's going to be other projects that come from that stormwater strategic plan that aren't in here. So it, it isn't absolutely complete. Um, we need to do a little bit more on the buildings here, I think, to get, you know, like what really is there anything else on the horizon? But if, if it's been discussed, if it's been part of a plan that the board approved, we included it on there. And it's, it, it's very, very ambitious, even over a ten-year period. It's a lot for municipality the size of Lower Gwinnett to have taken on.
So you're just showing us the robustness of the day-to-day activities that we're doing and all of the potential activities we could do in a very shortened period.
If in the next six years, we wanted to do all.
If we wanted to do everything in six years.
Including non-emergency repairs to bridges and roads and things of that nature that I'm sure are very costly.
That are very costly, yes.
Okay.
And, and so we do, you know, part of what, and it's why there's so many pages and it's why it, it was quite complicated putting together, because it was trying to, to plan out, like if we were going to do these projects, what's even some semblance of feasibility? And I emphasize, there's only a little in this time-wise. But like if you were going to, you know, how many projects could you even begin to conceive you could do all at one time? And how long would it take to get them done? The grants don't pay, they, they're re, almost all of them are reimbursement. You pay first, you get reimbursed later. Now, for very large projects, you might get half, you know, you get some partial reimbursements. For the most part, I did not do that in here because it just makes it even more complicated. Project was done, I showed the reimbursement because it still had a little bit of a cycle of money that's coming in. But we, you know, I, I will, I do have another sheet that I, I put together today that we'll get to with the funding to show it's, it's about twelve million dollars of this, we guess, we would be paid for by grants. Again, what's in here? I, I was somewhat conservative with the grant amounts. What's, I went with what's a typical grant amount. For parks, you usually get two hundred and fifty thousand at a time. Every once in a while, you can get four hundred, five hundred, once in a, I don't know where that is. So there, so I went with a little bit more of the likely amounts. There certainly could be new opportunities, they're not in here. What is wildly optimistic in here is I made the assumption that every single grant application is fully funded.
That's not, that's not.
There is, it's again, just so you see everything. Over time, I think most of these projects could get somewhere close to the grant funding that we're showing here. But you're going to get rejected sometimes, you're going to have to go back. And, and you're not always going to get funding, you're going to get a little less than you ask for. But there's also going to be a different funding source that comes out that I, I don't know about right now that we, we will have.
So Mimi, there's a, a real advantage of seeing this collapsed and squished together to give us a, a sense of what we're talking about. But what is, is there a disadvantage in spreading this out over ten years? Or, or maybe it's going to turn out we have to spread it out over ten years.
So. So you, you have the reserves to pay for this, but you would decimate your reserves. And it would not.
To pay for all of it?
For that, with the grants that, that we get. But you'd destroy your credit rating. If you were ever going to borrow, it would be far more expensive to do that because it's, you would not, you'd have some operating reserves, you'll, I'll show this to you, but you wouldn't have much less in capital reserve. And the capital reserves that, that were built up took years to do. And that will, that, it would take many years to do it again. So that, it, it would be so irresponsible that you, you, you wouldn't want to do that. And the costs for doing that would, would be, would just make it a, a unreasonable decision.
The, if these are things we have to eventually pay for.
Not all. Some of them will be, some of them you want to do, some of them you have to do.
Okay, some are our choice. But in, in, historically, Lower Gwinnett has had a bond to pay for things. So is that, we're going to talk about that also, that possibility? And what that's, could cost us?
In, in time, part of what I wanted to set up, because I know this was complicated. In in time, part of what I wanted to set up, because I know this was complicated, was to get some information in front of you. And and to have you all start talking, thinking about debt. I mean, you Lower Gwinnett has been very fortunate to not need debt, to not have had debt payments for quite some time. That's, I think, a big reason you've been able to build up the reserves that you have. Because where most municipalities do have debt and and debt makes sense. When when you're you you're going to set up a 20 year repayment schedule for long term improvements that people 20 years from now are still going to be enjoying. You spread out the payments that way over time. So today's taxpayers don't get hit with a huge bill. You know, it's just sort of aligning the payment time horizon with the enjoyment time horizon or the benefit time horizon. So that makes sense. You've just been in such good financial shape, you've had the reserves. And honestly, in the past, I worked at a little bit slower pace with projects than where it seems to want to. So that you, you know, that that budget room from not having what's usually a pretty significant payment has gone into transfers every year from the general fund to various capital funds. And that's why you've been able to to build this up. You wouldn't want to take four or five years and destroy that though. Because it will take 20 years to build up again. And you would you would just the impact of the credit rating would be not only, you know, costly but embarrassing.
And I think a lot of the planning that we've done, it wasn't necess, I mean, while I would love to do all the parks in the next five years. I know that's not a realistic goal, but we have the plan now. So we can look for the funding, we can get rejected a few times and go back and ask for more money. And but this is very helpful to see.
And it's helpful to have the plans, just to you never know when there's going to be an opportunity. And because you have the plans in place, you may be able to pivot and take advantage of a grant opportunity that you couldn't because the the plans weren't in place. So I I definitely think the planning is good, just have to be realistic about how long it may take them.
Well, and I think also there's wants and there's needs, right? And so the needs we need to make sure are completely 100%. And then we just have to prioritize the wants. And to your point, if an opportunity comes up, we have the park plan. If something comes up with, you know, playground equipment or pickleball or whatever it is, we have need to only say we have plans, we're shovel ready.
But the needs as it relates to stormwater and different communities who are facing flooding, we have to.
Those are needs, those are ones. We can't have people getting flooded out of their homes. I mean, that's just not acceptable in Lower Gwinnett.
Anywhere, it's not acceptable anywhere.
Yes, but I only represent the people.
This is true.
I don't represent any of USA.
So that's what I will be asking for over the next few months is, you know, kind of a a prelude to getting into the budget process is to be thinking about how you want to prioritize that. And then part of what the staff will be putting together is keep, you know, now that we have the spreadsheet built, it will be easier to slice and dice, Tessie, as as you've talked about, to come up with different summary sheets that make this all more digestible to you. But so one of the things I I want a couple of points that I wanted to just get you thinking about and any welcome any feedback tonight that you have. These were the goals that staff came up with from a funding plan, like as we're prioritizing and figuring out a timeline for these projects too, and how much of our reserves to preserve at any one time. That these were the goals that that we came up with and actually added one from what from the spreadsheet that I had given you before, which is to make sure we can maintain sufficient reserves to commit as matching funds for future grants. It's partly why the spreadsheet is as complicated as it is. Once you've promised the the matching funds, obviously it needs to be there, but you want to make sure there's other reserves there. So when that fabulous grant opportunity comes, you have uncommitted matching funds that you can offer and then not touch for years. Because it can take that long between getting the grant and designing the project and building and getting reimbursement from the grant. And all of that needs to be there. Um, to maintain sufficient reserves for solid financial footing, you definitely have that right now. You would not have that if somehow we even physically could build all the projects in the plan. It's somewhere in between, you know, like so what you have some reserves to spend. I don't want you to think you can't spend any, but I think we need to spend more time thinking about what should be some some goals, some baselines that you'd want to preserve or even just maybe slow down significantly how you would, what you would decrease, things like.
Is there a magic number that we should think about for reserves?
You are well above the magic numbers that are usually thrown around. So if you didn't have these reserves, one of the things that that we will be putting together for you is a fund balance policy. Normally, what's what's in a typical township fund balance policy includes things like we will make sure that your general fund operating reserves never goes below 25% of your revenue. You're at like 200% or over 100% of your revenue. You're nowhere near the minimums that are usually advised. You're you're well above that. So that's what you have some room to spend. The thing is, at some point, if you did want to borrow, you need to go before Moody's and they're going to do a a review of all your finances. They don't like to see, no matter how big your reserves are, they don't want to see them going down significantly. You know, spending some of them, yeah, but it's got to be measured, it should be part of a plan, it should be thought out. How in time are you going to replenish them? Or is like, you know, you've truly decided this is the excess you can spend. It's there's a lot more analysis that needs to go in because of that. So so it's a little bit more complicated here, but it's because you're starting out from such a position of strength.
Is that why the operating reserves and the general capital reserves that you've articulated, I guess, at the beginning on the first page? For each year, the shift in the amounts and the totals is that based upon starting to spend very minimally? But keeping a balance in reserves and the operating reserve, the capital reserves and operating reserves so that we still show a significant amount?
So this plan, as we were spending, you know, whether it was matching funds or using the reserves, we weren't, we didn't touch the operating reserve at all. So this was was showing of small increases based on maintaining the same transfers into capital reserves, but no debt service.
So how does operating reserves dip a little bit from 24 to 25 or 26?
I think I don't know if it was higher transfers. Now I forget.
Because they don't.
Yeah. I don't know what sheet you're you're looking at, if you could pop it up so that I could.
It's on the, yeah.
It's the first sheet, one of the.
I just assumed that we were.
Spending a few hundred thousand, I mean, like $700,000 between 24 to 25.
Yeah.
The operating reserve.
Essentially, or that we were getting less.
Um, from two, from 2024 to 2025, that dip is from a transfer of a million dollars that we put in that we had already tried to do for traffic impact. I think it was $800,000 and 200,002 capital reserve. Then after that, our transfers remain consistent at $800,000 out of the operating. And our surplus handles most of that. So between the other transfers that we have to do for MMOs and things like that, we're bringing about, we're keeping about $100,000 in the operating reserves, adding to that each year. Everything else is going out.
At 1.2 million, we always keep forgetting what that is.
Yeah.
Yeah. So but it's the the general fund capital reserves, you can see go down, you know, start at at 10 million and actually the ending balance are a little bit less than than the 3.4. So let me just, so the board has heard this, the the other goals that we're trying to get from this whole planning exercise, this which is not quite done, is that we can sustain proper cash flow during the lag between paying the project costs and getting reimbursed from the grants and that we would retain a quality bond rating. I've covered most of the assumptions. One that I wanted to emphasize, this is another somewhat optimistic assumption that we have, that the that we it is sustainable, that we can manage these projects, forget the money. There's a lot of projects and when you have a lot going at one time, that's how mistakes are made, especially with some of these big projects. We're going to be talking later on the agenda about, you know, a a project that where we got a curve ball on it that happens in construction. And as you try to do too much, I do get a little bit concerned that we're going to take our eye off the ball because we're looking at something else and that that could be costly and problematic too. So this is the what this crazy plan would do to the reserves. You've heard this already.
An X Y plot.
So Jamie, if you could bring up the spreadsheet and and go to page nine of that. First tab, yep. So what what Jamie's bringing up is just another summary sheet of of the spreadsheet that you were given in the packet. And you all have hard copies sitting up there, if you want to look ahead to to page nine too. It's it's just summarizing the total project expenses again, which is the 29 million. The grants that we pulled together in this and estimating when we would get them for anything that we can think of. And that's just over $12 million. Um, there's a a few small sources of revenue, developer contributions, interest, sale of vehicles, things like that, that comes to about 3 million. And which leaves using $14 million of reserves, including money that would be transferred in each year as part of our budget. It won't come up?
Right, so the $14 million.
Ah, there we go. Oh, okay.
So so the 14 million. There there'll be money coming in, we'll we'll be adding to the reserves, not at the pace we're taking out, obviously. But we'll be adding to the reserves each year, yes or no?
Right, the way I I drew up this plan, which was really focused for the most on spending, on on paying for the projects from all the plans, public works facility sitting over here to the side. So yes, if you could continue to make the kind of transfers you've been making, and and we reduced it a little bit. So this year, we budgeted a million dollars to be transferred from the general fund to capital funds. We reduced it a little bit to 800,000 a year going forward from 25 to 2030 in here. So because of that, you see the I highlighted in yellow, the the reduction in the the combined capital funds. So capital reserve, transportation, stormwater fund, liquid fuels would be 7.6 million dollars. That's assuming that we continue to make those large transfers from the general fund. If you wind up borrowing, that's going to, that borrowing would more than exceed the amount of of transfers that you'd make now. So that would make it a a lot, it would make it difficult to keep having these these levels of transfers without enormous tax increases.
Enormous?
Enormous. Not dollar wise enormous, percentage wise enormous. Lower Gwinnett, the only tax rate you can change is in the real estate tax. Everything else is capped statutorily. So you you do not have that discretion. The only one you can change is the real estate tax. You collect in round numbers a million dollars a year in real estate taxes. You'll easily have more than that in debt service if you issued bonds. So you could easily have 100% tax increase. That was was not dollar wise that significant because your mileage rate is so low. Your taxes are much lower here compared to your surrounding neighbors. And we can put all of that information together and we and we can tell residents over and over again, it sounds like a lot, but it's really only this dollar amount. But what could it and we won't, you don't have to do that, you have flexibility. Because you have these large reserves, we could have the time to phase in tax increases. We can, we will do this in a much better way. But if you, again, if you're looking at this kind of crazy scenario, trying to jam it in, you would need a huge tax increase. Because we have time to plan and and, you know, lengthen out the time horizon for these projects, we'll be able to manage that better. But it there's there's definitely no way, if you if we wind up borrowing money, decide to go ahead with public works facility and we need to borrow money for that, you wouldn't be able to continue to make these kind of contributions at that level. I think you'd have to scale back some. That the earned income tax is your bread and butter. That that's where you make money. It's why apartments are your bread and butter. Nobody likes to hear that, but that's where you make your money from.
When on income tax can only be raised in the event that we are using it to procure open space?
Yes.
I'm assuming also that this doesn't, this, your figures don't account for any large rental developments that might come across on the town, right?
We talked about that. I I think as we go through the budget process, we could put a little bit more of that together where you could, you know.
I just want to, this doesn't.
It does not, it does not.
It's a horrible case scenario. Good.
Correct.
Yep.
But we can set up a little bit of what if you wanted, like, you know, this would generate this kind of money, that that type of thing.
This is a cautionary tale for us to.
It is a cautionary.
In our approach to capital projects moving forward.
And then, so if we can go back to the presentation, if it will let you bring it up. There are some decisions that the board will, it would be helpful if you could make over time, certainly by fall as we get into the the budget, and that's going to be which projects. So which project to prioritize, we can, oops, we go to the next one. How the timeline that you're comfortable with? And and are you comfortable considering debt? Especially for the public works garage, we need to do a little bit more work there to come back with numbers for the board to to consider, but that's obviously a big one. And but then if if, you know, we can, as as part of the next iteration of this, give you a better idea of how much debt would cost. You know, what kind of debt service? I I think to do that, it would be very helpful to bring in a bond advisor or underwriter because it's very complicated. They're experts on that. They can help with planning out timing for this. They'll have ideas on how to make the most of your reserves. They'll have an idea what Moody's is going to be looking for if you did have to undergo a review. All of that would be very useful information.
That would be good.
So next steps, if you any other questions, feedback, welcome that. Um, otherwise, my my plan is that we would, the next iteration then would be over a longer time horizon, more summary. You've kind of seen the detail, all of the spreadsheets are what we're going to use to be pulling those those numbers, but.
You did this to scare us.
I did.
We are undisputed.
Partly put in a grant application box for parks, I'm just saying.
Oh, Danielle, I can get scarier. I I did want you to see the whole thing, but you know, like you could come back with a 10 year plan and show you how that works. Um, and, you know, we'll we'll continue to be having better cost estimates for the projects as we do that. And probably more specific decision points.
Thank you for all of your work putting those together. I know this is.
It's obvious.
Yeah, I I don't.
Intricate.
I don't think it's easy to 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 guess at some of these things. And then, of course, there's always things like happened to Upper Dublin, tornado coming through, unexpected things like that to plan for. That's why we need our reserves.
You absolutely do. You you just never know when there there's going to be an emergency, when there's going to be an economic downturn, anything like that. I I do appreciate the patience and and persistence of all the people who are giving me estimates for this more than once. Too, I'd come back going, no, I need this. Thank you very much.
No, and thank you, thank you for doing it. I think it's it's helpful for us to see there's so much that we want to accomplish and we want to do it all right now. But we do realize that we can't do it all right now. Some of us do.
I do.
The amount of work and and estimate and guesstimate and time that you put in is evident and the detail and we it's appreciative. So thank you. Uh, moving on, next we have in front of us two. Moving on, next we have in front of us two considerations for grant submissions. The first one is the D C E D watershed restoration grant. This restoration and project program. Are we doing them together? Really only on number two? Yeah, okay, you just did one memo, okay. So this is Resolution 202419 authorizing the submission to the PA Department of Community and Economic Development of a watershed restoration and protection program grant application for the Jansen repair and enhancement and stream bank restoration project that is required by Lower Guanines Pluton Reduction Plan. Again, this memo is included in our board packet as well as online. Are there any questions from the board? The total amount is 187,000 to install that repair and restoration enhancement and stream bank stabilization. And again, it is included for reducing sediment and a little nisham neat is required as a part of the township's D E P M S four permit. Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the submission of the PA D C E D watershed restoration and protection grant program for the Jansen repair and enhancement and stream bank restoration project. Is there a second? All those in favor? Mission carries. Next up is the township seeking funding through the F M P. Flood mitigation program in the amount of $54,400 to conduct a survey and perform a flood study of a portion of the Willow Run and Wizahaken Creek in the Penland section of the township. Study will be used to determine base flood elevations within the neighborhood and identify stormwater improvements that could occur within the watershed to effectively reduce the rate and volume of the runoff to the flood for the residents. The township is proposing a match commitment of 15% for this application. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the submission of the PA D C E D flood mitigation program grant application for the Penland Neighborhood Flood Study. Is there a second? All those in favor? In carries. Thank you. Both of those grants, just for, and it is included in the memo, have a 15% match with the township. Next up.
Could I just ask a question that, I'm sorry to backtrack, but with all this budget consideration, is there any way we can become more efficient to reduce our costs? Did you build that into your planning?
Are operating or efficient in how we do the capital projects?
Not the first.
The, I have looked at this so many times over the years as a manager. One of the things that I find helpful in doing that is simplifying the budget itself. A lot of municipal budgets get stretched out and cut up like Lower Guanines is. So you have, you have things spread out, you have like multiple departments in your budget for one department. Public Works is spread out over five different areas. And then you've got 15 different accounts for supplies and all of these things. It's, and I'm sure there's over, when, as this was happening, it made sense. You know, somebody wanted to track this expense and somebody was putting together a bunch of expenses and grouped things together. Over the years, what it's done is make it very hard to track your total expenses. So when, now that Melinda's been here a year, she's been through the whole budget process once, she's doing it again. We're going to sit down at the beginning of the budget process to look at ways to consolidate some of those things that have just unnecessarily, what seems like now unnecessarily spread out. And we'll be talking to the board about that of where, you know, collapsing, Public Works is a prime example. Some of the general fund departments in Public Works, every, all these things that have to do in roads, put it in one place, cut back on some of these supplies, simplify it. And then I think from that, usually just doing that, I think is going to reduce our budget a little bit because you have a lot of duplication. You have so many small accounts and you have a fudge factor in each account, that's going to reduce it. But then, once you have that, we'll have much better reports for all the department heads to be able to use to be tracking those expenses. So that's one, that's definitely the next thing that we have teed up to try to have a good handle on it. Otherwise, I mean, I think we're always looking for ideas where there's definitely a big push right now for getting caught up in technology as a way to save time. We're getting all of our payroll and timekeeping online. So much of that was done in paper before. That's another example of how we're doing that. We're getting more of our, building out the G I S system on Tracer. That will save time instead of rummaging through all the paper files. It's sitting not just on a computer, but on your phone. So it's just going to take, that creates a little bit more time in the short run, but should pay off with some savings.
Okay, I think you're headed in the same direction. I was considering that maybe some of our costs could be reduced as well as, you know, to kind of bring those line items together over time.
Your biggest expense is people, and you're a service organization, so need people. So that, it gets harder. I don't know that it would happen for this year, but something else, because it's a fair question. You know, and you all should have an understanding where your money comes from. But you can break up the budget after we get this done. So maybe for next year, for not 2025, but for 2026, showing what your commitments are and what your discretionary spending is, you'll be surprised how small that is. So there's not a lot of efficiency gains.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
And next up, we have consideration on contract with H K Keller deserves an auctioneer for sale of the Ingersoll House. I don't know if, Donna, you talked to me about this?
Thank you. So we're back to talking about the sale of the Ingersoll property again. So I've been working with Lee Barry, who we took on as a Realtor representative for us to help us through this process. I've talked to a few different auction firms. And basically, because of the second-class township code in Pennsylvania, we can't just have Lee go sell it to a private party or something like that. We have to hold an auction. There are additional responsibilities that come with that, like you as a board have to approve the end, the final sale at the auction at a public meeting. So we're talking to Keller partly because of recommendations from Wes Whiteland, who recently went through a similar process. They had the auction as a special public meeting and did a lot of advertisement in advance. If I remember correctly, they started their bidding for one of their properties at 2.4 million, a big commercial property. They wound up selling for 4.4 million. So Keller's got a very good reputation for going for things like this in the public setting. So after talking to them, they're more than comfortable working within the limits of the code. They're a very personable to deal with. They've got a lot of history with the marketing side. Lee was also very comfortable with them in terms of working together. So if you approve working with them as a contract, we will immediately get on marking the property, putting all of the pushes out there to the M L S world and things like that. Hopefully get a whole bunch of interested parties there. We're doing open houses and private showings and things like that, too, as we go through. Pretty straightforward process except the auction at the end.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion for us to enter into a contract with H K Keller to serve as an auctioneer for the sale of the Ingersoll House. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Mine.
Mission carries. Thank you so much, John. Except as the consideration of change, of a change order to revise the Bridge Foundation with the Bethune Pike pedestrian improvement.
Did we have, we didn't have this in our.
No.
I'm about to go through it all right now. I just got the latest, got the latest information at about 5:00 PM today. All right, so the construction of this project is ongoing. And about a week and a half ago, the contractor encountered a water main in a spot that was unbeknownst to us and them. Luckily, they were digging slow enough so that it wasn't impacted in any kind of negative way. It's just, it's in the way of our abutments on both sides of the creek.
On both sides.
Yeah. So we were able to unearth it enough to take survey shots of it and then put it onto the plan so we could, you know, understand the impacts. We've been working with township staff, Contech, who is the bridge manufacturer, structural engineers from my office and the contractor to try to come up with ways that we can change this enough so that we're not impacting the water line. One thought we had, we tried to shift the bridge around. We have a 60-foot bridge that's ready to be shipped from Contech along with abutments, shifting it within our right-of-way to try to avoid the water line. It's not, it's not possible. The closer you get to, there's a, there's a pond on that side of the road and a dam. The closer you get to that, the unsafe or the, you know, the excavations get unsafe that close to the dam. We talked about potentially buying a bigger bridge, longer span, 80 feet instead of 60 feet, and moving the abutments back on each side. The problem with that is cost and timing because the bridge we have that's ready to ship can't be used. The relocation of the water line is a cost, there's the coordination, and so there's the time for that. What we're up against here is the current contract, trying to finish this project by the end of June because of the grant timeline from Montgomery County. So what we've been exploring recently is altering the foundation designs so that instead of being on a precast concrete footing that would go in the ground about 12 feet down, we would install piles and the piles would essentially be next to the water line. And then at a higher elevation, you build a pile cap and that's the foundation. So the piles bear on the 12 feet down, but the, so the water line's essentially underneath the bridge in this instance. We would still be able to use the same 60-foot bridge that we have ready to be delivered from Contech. So in order to get some pricing from the contractor, we had to put together a rough pile design. Nothing could be finalized this quickly. But what I've been telling everyone is that we need to come up with a kind of worst-case scenario so I could talk to you guys about it tonight because your next meeting isn't until the 25th of June. And we're hoping to have some, a resolution between now and then so that the bridge could be installed and we can still continue along this timeline. So, all that said, the worst-case scenario we're looking at is a $160,000 change order. I believe that there can be value engineering in the number of piles in the, a bunch of, a bunch of the aspects of this design to hopefully bring that cost down a little bit. But that is what I'm prepared to say is the, a worst-case scenario. And the last thing I'm going to say before I'll answer questions is that the project currently, what was in the budget and what we are, we were currently about $130,000 under budget. So this change order would take you to about $30,000 over budget. Questions?
These pipes that mysteriously appeared. Did, how did we not know that they were going to be there?
So when you do a design like this along a roadway, you do a PA one call. When you're doing the survey in the design, you do a PA one call. The utility companies go out and they mark on the street where their lines are. And then our surveyors go out and we shoot those lines and we shoot those marks. As part of the design one call, sometimes utility companies will also give you plans of their assets that they may have on file. That you don't always get plans, but sometimes you do. In this instance, we got the marks on the street and that was it. So we shot the marks on the street. We marked it, yeah.
How certain are you that your proposal is going to actually work and solve the problem?
Very certain.
How many, 5% or 99%? Harry's in. Lot of room in there.
Okay, 90%.
So the piles, four, six?
Four on each side, but one of the first things we started to discuss was the potential to do a design with three on each side. And the piles cost about $11,000 each. So if we could, we could save 20-plus thousand dollars by maybe.
To make it less structurally sound.
No, we're not going to design anything that will be not structurally sufficient.
But what's the value of having four on each side versus three?
The, there's a lot of us, when you, when you lay out the pile design, there's a lot of assumptions that have to be made, the type of pile that you use, the geotech subsurface conditions of the soil and how far you have to go down to bear on rock and such. So there just wasn't enough time in the few days we've been putting this design together to flesh out all of that, to decide if three is sufficient or four. So in the interest of trying to get to the worst possible scenario, we went four on either side.
Jim, so is that pipe, was it underground and now it's exposed?
Yeah, it was underground and it is exposed in only a few locations. But during this time of the year, that's not a concern because of the, it's not getting cold enough to freeze anything.
So that was going to be my next question. Are you going to re-bury it? Or the project itself now that you discovered this pipe being there, is what you're proposing going to have a negative impact on that pipe?
No, that's, that's part of the pile design is that you keep them far enough away from it and the type of pile installation such that it's not vibrating as it's going past it to a point where it's going to negatively impact it. And this design will have to be reviewed by Ambler Water.
And approved by them, I assume?
Essentially, yes.
It has to be reviewed and approved by Ambler Water, so it's Ambler Water's pipe?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry if I didn't say that in the beginning. It is Ambler Borough's pipe. I think it's a part of their system that they acquired from North Wales many years ago.
So are they, are you, are you hopeful? Or are you expecting that they will review it in the timeframe of review and approve in the timeframe that we?
Yeah, that was 5% of the 10% that I was leaving for.
That's pretty optimistic of Ambler. Do they know about this or no?
They do.
Okay.
You stated that we're, that 160,000 is a worst-case scenario and that we're 130 under budget. So is there, what's the probability of us getting to 130 and being on budget? Zero?
Eight?
No.
That's a brand then.
I mean, just, I mean, I know there's no way because you have to go in and see if you need to put four V three and so forth, but you had given us a worst-case scenario. So you, were you just really overshooting by time just to be sure?
I didn't want to overshoot, I would never have wanted to overshoot by this much. When I got that number at 5 o'clock, I was quite dismayed that I'd have to say it out loud here. So I'm trying to be as realistic as possible, but I'm also, we're going to work to value engineer this with the contractor and with, you know, my structural engineers and with Contech to get it as low as I possibly can.
Understood.
We know you're.
And I assume the answer to this is no, but I'm going to ask anyway. I know that part of this was funded through a grant based on the old plans with the old estimate. I assume we have no, do we have any option to say, hey, Ambler didn't tell us where this pipe was? Now we're over budget, can?
I don't think so. I, the only, the reason that I say that I don't think that's a great route to go is because the estimates that we gave them for this were actually like 467,000 and we're at, we're at 340 now, right? So we were on, we gave them the over budget and so it's not really all that much over in their eyes.
Yeah, okay.
You think that we'll need to ask for an extension again for the grant or we can get this done potentially by June 30th?
I think that we should have the discussion with the county about, we should just be open with them about what's going on. And we're trying our best to get it done by June 30th. Two reasons, one, the grant, and two, our contractor has another project lined up for weeks from now that they'd like to get to. And so if it extends past that, then we're probably in a situation where they're going to need to demobilize from here, go to there and then come back and we just, we don't want to do that.
Okay.
What's in why is that?
Because their contract with us is to finish this project by June thirtieth and they have another project that they're going.
Hey, May.
I'm saying, what if they don't? You're saying they're going to come back later?
Yeah.
Well, I don't understand if they're, they're required to finish the pro.
Because.
I'm not going to put negative energy into the.
Apparently, apparently I'm powerful enough to make it happen.
Okay, I just, I hear you, but this was unexpected, obviously. Not on, not any, appears to have not been anybody's fault, but.
Yeah.
Just, why can't the Mets people just wait? Why do we have to wait?
And that's a discussion that we would have and that's not a discussion for tonight.
Okay.
So.
Goodbye, May.
So the change order actually is for the, is for the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Or is it the thirty thousand dollars?
No, what I would like you to do is off, if you're okay with this and we want to move forward in this timeframe we've talked about, I think you need to authorize Mimi to sign a, a change order up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then we'll work in the next week or so to get that number finalized. And as long as it's not more than a hundred and sixty and we've done everything we can to get it as low as we can, then we would move forward with it.
Okay. Any questions, any additional questions from the board?
No, I mean, we, we have to do it.
Any questions from the public?
That's a big number.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize our township manager to assign a change order up to the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars related to the Bridge Foundation for the Best on Pike Pedestrian Improvement. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, Jim.
You want to just stand here? Next up is the traffic engineering report. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
That's a good news to have, Chris.
This is, that's it for today.
You know what, it's plenty.
No, no questions? It, it was a report that walked us through April thirtieth to May twenty-eighth and then the performed work that is proposed from May twenty-eighth to June twenty-fifth. Seeing no questions from the board, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Next in our board pack was the traffic engineer report. That status report is through the end of May, I believe. Are there any questions for our traffic engineer? Willie, no?
We're still on track with ship?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Is the, is the, is the traffic light working now better?
All the temporary adjustments were completed last week. So conditions still aren't great, but we think they're better than they were before. So, yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions, Chair to the board? Thank you so much. Next up is our, is our finance report for April two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any questions from the board?
I, I just have a really quick question. The current year revised budget is for the full year and the current year actuals twenty twenty-four is just up to this point in twenty twenty-four? I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Year-to-date budget report?
The year-to-date budget report was prior. And the current, the current year revised budget?
Oh, the budget is, is for the year.
Right, so the last column is.
The last column is for the year, and yes.
That we're twenty-five percent of the way there.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. That's what I figured, I just wanted to confirm.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I appreciate the highlighting.
I was just going to say, thank you for include and like, you know, the note in the beginning about what accounts are revenue and expenses. It's just, until we, until we memorize the numbers or we get used to seeing it over and over again. It's definitely helpful to know what money's coming in first.
Yeah. All the steps you've taken have made it easier to understand, I think.
Next up is our invoice report. Has everyone had a chance to review? Any questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve our invoice report, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And carries. Next up is our minute for the May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes? Any questions, concerns or comments? Any questions or concerns and comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four public meeting, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And carries. Included in our board packet is the Volunteer Commission meeting highlights. Are there any questions or concerns from those volunteer meeting highlights?
I, I only have one comment on the Parks and Recs reference to the Texaco lot. So. Clint Ellers from the Rotaries, I mentioned a while back about wanting to team up or do something with the Texaco. I don't know if anything ever came from that, I'm only mentioning it if that was discussed at Parks and Rec or.
I don't think that was ever talked about. We, what they talked about and, and I think that would be great. I mean, what, what was talked about at the Parks Board meeting was, you know, we had talked previously about peeking down that sort of manual sign, having another larger like electronic sign somewhere. And we thought maybe the Texaco lot would be a good location for that because of all the traffic. So the Parks Board really was just kind of brainstorming ideas about what else we could kind of do there to make it this sort of entryway to the town, you know, our main corridor.
Well, the Rotarians talked about it, so it may be worth reaching out to them. I don't know if anything came of it, just, I, I know that he had mentioned it to me a couple of times over.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
They were offering money.
Yeah, I was going to say, we were talking about increasing landscaping and, yeah. Let's have a launch.
There you go, there you go.
Yep. Yeah, so if anyone has any, you know, other comments or feedback on that, but that was sort of the start was, we thought that lot would be a good location for it and then there's not really much space to do that much with that other park-wise. So it'd be more sort of building up landscaping.
Like a pocket park?
Yeah.
No unusual.
Building up landscaping, making it look, yeah, and low maintenance, you know, making it look nice, maybe incorporating that wall, stonework.
Somebody should talk to them because he, they definitely had interest, so just reach out, I think it's probably worth it.
Just want to extend a thank you to our solicitor for making a presentation on the Sunshine Act to our Human Resource Commission.
A pleasure.
Also wanted to ensure that everyone saw the memorandum in our board packet that Laura Bonnet Township has once again obtained the status of a Tree City USA through the Arbor Day Foundation. Very appreciative of that. Any other staff updates?
We just have, I just have one regarding the Northern Montgomery Recycling Commission, which we're a member municipality of that. The solicitor for that commission will be circulating information on ordinance updates that are going to be required because of changes that were made to Act one oh one. So that is going to require all the member municipalities to update their ordinances. The other thing is that the commi, the commission has decided to distribute the grant funding a different way. It has historically been distributed by population of each municipality. And so they are going to transition into having it distributed based on actual recycling totals. So for example, North Wales always had the highest, North Wales Borough always had the most recycling totals, but the smallest population. So they always got the least amount of grant funds. So this is going to be, they're going to try it out this way and amend the intergovernmental agreements to reflect this change in how the funds are distributed to be a little bit more equitable among the member municipalities. We also did just get an email today, I think it was, that they're changed from DEP about changes to the nine oh four recycling grants where they anticipate a reduction in the grant monies by about eight percent across the board. So the funds will be decreasing somewhat.
What percentage, Jamie?
Eight.
Eight?
Yeah. I don't know how that'll shake out just because they're behind, like, the grant funding we're getting now is from like a couple of years ago. So I don't know if that eight percent will be realized right away or if it'll be in a few years when they're caught, when we're actually getting this year's money, so. Oh, yes, and we also got notification on Friday that we did get awarded the Monco twenty forty grant for the Penland Train Station Trail.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so, and then we also got notice that we are, we also received the PICO Green Region Grants for the Pollinator Gardens at the two parks that we put in.
Nice.
Awesome job.
Yeah, great work.
Just reducing that spreadsheet number, you know?
Picks up your spreadsheet.
Oh, I guess.
Should I ask about DCNR? We also, so we put in a grant application for DCNR through this community partnership grant. And the max amount they gave us was two fifty, they said, is usually what they will fund in an application. I was contacted today by Drew Gilchrist from DCNR and he said he's not promising anything, but he is wanting to go back to the committee and find out from us if we would be, if they were willing to fund the Oxford Park Playground project for two hundred thousand instead of the two hundred and fifty thousand, would we still be interested in pursuing the project?
Why wouldn't we be?
I would think.
Why are they giving, why are they shorting us?
I guess probably just to spread the money out, they probably have a lot of competitive projects.
I mean, we never expect to get the full ask anyway, right? I mean, I would like the two fifty if you're listening.
But if you can give us two hundred as opposed to nothing, we would gladly, gladly appreciate that.
But this kind of, just to go back to the complicated spreadsheet. So this, this phase of Oxford Park is seven, the cost estimate is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we'll have grant funding for two hundred now. So there's five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, assuming it actually, that's actually what it costs. So five hundred thousand in round numbers, it's coming out of our reserves. If we break some of the park master plans into more phases. So maybe it's a five hundred thousand dollar phase, you get two hundred or two fifty, which is kind of typical. You know, half of it's grant-funded and you just, but that means it's that much longer because there's that many more phases before the park master plans are built up.
Me and Skins are young, they're not coming.
You tell, tell that to Molly.
Well, and he did, he did say that we could re, like, we're not, if we agree to a two hundred thousand dollar funding, we're not on the hook for the full scope of the project that we submitted for. We can modify that scope.
Yeah, okay.
Do what we can do with the money we get.
I like it. There's that one game that that young boy came and really won it.
The Gaga pit. That's something we can get that.
We need to get the Gaga pit as soon as possible.
Jim and I can.
I was just going to say, Zach.
I'm going to supervise.
Oh, supervise.
I bring sandwiches.
Are, are we going to be able to get a pickleball court with that?
Eventually.
Not with that.
Not at all, unfortunately.
It just keeps getting farther and farther and farther away.
In a relatively short-term horizon, I won't push that into the ten-year, it'll stay in the five-year.
Is still like a priority on the parks plan, for sure.
So you, you all know that we allow township employees to respond to fire calls during the day if they have been accepted by Wissahickin Fire Company as a firefighter than, and, and like at the moment, they can go. If they're like truly in the middle of something crucial, then they, they don't. But otherwise, they do respond to calls. So we have several employees that do that. We actually, Corey Hughes was just accepted by Wissahickin, so it's another employee who will be available during the day. He's been a firefighter in the past. But last week, I'm going to ask Fred to tell the story. So last week, two of our Public Works employees, Dan Fantini and Dennis Gravenby, responded to a fire and.
Oh, yeah, Dennis and, and Dan left for fire late in the afternoon, they didn't get back till after we all left. And they're very modest and humble, so it was a little hard getting the details out, but they rescued a dog in, they assisted over Dublin. Sometimes firemen say, you know, we made a rescue, you put the fire out, you find a dog, oh, we rescued a dog. Not in this case, they actually went in the building while it was still on fire, went down in the basement, they found a dog. I mean, obviously it was teamwork, it was the whole station from here, the Wissahickin's B station here assisted. But they were directly involved in rescuing a dog. Those people, you know, they were having a bad day. It could have been worse if Dan and, and Dennis weren't there, so. It's another thing that makes it nice to work here and live here. And it's nice that they're not just allowed to go, you guys like encourage them to go. And turned out well for that dog. It's, yeah, I mean, it is important. I mean, sometimes it's nothing and sometimes I'm like, hey, you know, we really need to get this blacktop done, but, you know, it, it is important, they did a good job, they'll never say anything to anybody because like I said, they're humble and modest, but they really did, other than, you know, your family, the pets are part of the family. That, that was saving the day.
That's awesome, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And tell the guys we said thanks.
Please extend our thanks and appreciation to them.
Awesome.
Want to supervisor comments?
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate our board's congratulation to the much-deserving folks that we recognized early in the program tonight, I'm not going to go through the whole list. But I just want to end up by thanking the staff who continue to excel in your jobs and make us as a board look better and make the community such an enjoyable place to live. So thanks all of you.
Neen?
I, I will just add, there's a couple events coming up in the township. The pride flag raising is at five o'clock on the thirty-first. There's a speaker event here, we partnered, our historical committee partnered with the Historical Society. Have a speaker event on June fourth at six thirty PM. And I just wanted to also thank everybody who sponsored and participated in the Touch a Truck and who came out for the Touch a Truck event. It was awesome, even though it was raining, tons of people there. And it, it's, it really is an amazing event, so kudos to everyone who put that together. I know RCRU worked very hard on it and it was great to see the community come out, so we keep doing it.
And me?
Like say, on May twentieth, I had the privilege to go to the Independent Auditor's Financial Report Presentation with the staff and some of the super, I'm sorry, some of the auditor, township auditors, Ryan Amchin and Kathy Pagano. And I don't really have anything substantive to say about that except that there are so many comments that Melinda, you've been doing an amazing job and have really turned the books around. And I think we all here know, but I just want to put it on the record that just very thankful for everything you've done.
About a week ago, I'm just laying on the couch flipping through the TV on a Sunday morning and I come across our own Fred Zollers on TV, WTVI. Giving him a shout out for all the work he's done at the fire company in Happer, Happer, right?
Oh, that's awesome.
It was, it was a great piece on the fire company and Fred did us all proud as he always does.
That's awesome.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
Just want to also reiterate what everyone else has said, but also to, again, emphasize on thirty-first of May at five PM, which is a Friday at Veterans Park, we'll be raising the pride flag. Anyone that wants to come out and support, we encourage, as well as all the other events. Want to thank our staff continuously assisting us and providing us exemplary information. Um, want to thank our staff continuously assisting us and providing us exemplary information and work. Um, and I did hear from, I guess, auditors that appreciative of Melinda and all that you have done as it relates, um, to just even the presentation of our finances. And again, we have gotten outreach from just various community members around how happy they were with the Toucha Truck and that free event for our community. Um, so thanking everybody for all of their hard work and it's, it's definitely showing and is definitely appreciated by the board and our community. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.